Trustee Papin.
Hi Kelly.
Okay, we've got her. All right, so we're going to welcome everyone to the Wednesday, November 16th, 2016, public meeting of the Halton District School Board. I would like to welcome everyone who is in attendance and note regrets from trustee Metropolansky and that executive officer McFadden is absent, but in her place we have General Manager Taha, welcome. And I believe, and we also have trustee Papin online. I believe everyone else is here. So I would like to call the meeting to order. I would like to ask everyone if you could please mute your phones or your computers or whatever other device you have or thing that may make noise and remind everyone that this meeting is video voice recorded and being video and shared out through the internet. So wave hi, live streamed, thank you. I would also like to, the Halton District School Board acknowledges and thanks the first peoples of this territory and other indigenous peoples for the use of this land in order for us to continue our work today. Thank you. So our first item is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda? Trustee Garbent, seconded by trustee Gray. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. Is there any declarations of possible conflict of interest tonight? Seeing none? We have no delegations or presentations, so we will move on to ratification of the minutes of our regular board meeting of November the 2nd, 2016. Can I have a mover? Trustee Gray, seconded by trustee Garbent. Any discussion on the minutes of November the 2nd? Seeing none, all those in favor.
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. So we are now up to business transacted in private session, and I do believe there are a couple of items.
Yes, there are three. The first is a property matter, report 16164, and I so move.
Do I have a second or trustee Al Harrison? I'm just trying to find it on our... Yep. Okay, so moved by vice chair Graves, seconded by trustee Al Harrison. Is there any discussion on the property matter? Seeing none, all those in favor.
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. You have another item?
Yes, the second is be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation from the Audit Committee to approve the 2015-2016 management letters of recommendations from the external auditor, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second or trustee Gray? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. Is there any other items?
The final one is be it resolved that the Board of Trustees accept the 2015-2016 Audit Committee annual report to the Board of Trustees, and I so move.
Thank you. Do I have a second or trustee Harvey Hope? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. Are there any others?
That's everything, thank you.
Thank you. So we are now up to our order paper. Is there any comments or questions on the order paper tonight? Seeing none, we'll move right along to our action item. The annual operational plan, Associate Director Boe, report 16154 revised on page 14 of your board package. Welcome, Associate Director Boe. Would you like to speak to it?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Through you two trustees, this report came to trustees two weeks ago and is back tonight for decision. Just a couple of changes I just wanted to highlight so that trustees are aware and they are emboldened in the report. So in the, some minor wording changes to some of the targets, and I thanks to trustee Oliver for her suggestion on using the word proportion in some of our targets. And based on some feedback at the board meeting of two weeks ago, there seemed to be nods around the table with some feedback on strategies. So you'll notice that there's a couple of strategies now in the operational plan around alternative curriculum and also on the safe use of technology. There was one additional plan, and we can certainly speak to that this evening as well. It's on the very last page of the plan and it's in the budget column. You'll notice that there's a strike through on the $45,000 and that was a change after some consultation with how other boards utilize the service applied to education, which is where many education workers apply for jobs. I think the consensus was that other boards are typically using that for non-teaching staff, but their teachers would still use that, use that service. And so that's resulted in this slight change. And I know as General Manager Taha would be able to speak to that as well for trustees. So I'm happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you. I'll put the motion on the table and then we can have discussion. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the operational plan 2016-2017 as outlined in report 16154, moved by trustee Oliver, seconded by trustee Al Harrison. Discussion, trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you Chair. Thank you very much, Associate Director Boe, for this great report. Very happy to see the goals, targets, and the strategies. And I'm very pleased to see the addition of the strategy for safe use of technology and digital citizenship. I would just like to highlight the, and stress the importance of ensuring that it's not just our staff that understand the safe use of technology, but that information is relayed to all of our students at an age-appropriate level in each grade, because we do know that kindergarten kids are using their parents' iPads as well to play games, et cetera. So it starts very young, that all of our students understand how to use technology safely, what that encompasses, and, and also a little bit about the unplugging, so that they do build in time when they are technology-free and they get to go outside and enjoy the outdoors, play with their friends, play with their siblings, family, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Yes, I wanted to show my appreciation for the inclusion of students with an alternative pathway. This is very important to our equity as a board and I appreciate that very much, and I wanted to convey that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this topic tonight? Seeing none, then? All those in favor? Trustee Papin?
In favor?
Thank you. That passes unanimously. I'd just like to thank Associate Director Boe and everyone involved in, which I know is everyone in the room, that was involved in building the operational plan, because I know that a lot of hard work was put into this and, and I know that all trustees do appreciate all the work and we look forward to hearing the highlights over the year when you bring us back feedback. So thank you very much. So our next item is our student trustees report. Student Hajali.
Thank you, Chair Amos. So this weekend, Dash and I had the opportunity to go to our Fall General Meeting on behalf of Osta Eko. Dash regrets that she cannot be here today. She's actually an executive member of Osta and she has to be there a little early just to make sure everything runs smoothly and set up, make sure things set up for the conference this weekend. So Dash and I had the opportunity to go to our HLF, to the HLF Gala this, this past week, and that was a great opportunity, a great experience. We met a lot of new people, a lot of great people, made a lot of connections. That was really nice. This coming Tuesday, we have our second Student Senate meeting, and we've actually invited the HLF Director to come and speak to the students. The reason for this is because previously we've outlined our year plan, and in the first half, we're also, we're having a sort of a charity fundraiser sort of thing, and we decided that HLF would be a great charity for this, for this event, because it impacts students directly in our community. So we're bringing in the Director to kind of talk about that, give students kind of an idea of what the charity's about, answer any questions they have, kind of explain what their goals are, things like that. In the meeting, we're also going to be discussing different issues that impact students, having them give us any ideas that they want us to bring to the board, things like that. And we're also announcing our Executive Council that we mentioned last, last meeting. And again, the purpose of the Executive Council is kind of to encourage students to attend our meetings in order to have that voice be strengthened throughout our Senate.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for our student trustee tonight? Trustee Daniele.
Thank you, great report as always, and good luck with your meeting. But my comment is actually for my fellow trustees, just a reminder that the student trustee, the Student Senate, all trustees are welcome to that. And if you ever want to see some incredible young people doing some incredible work, consider Robby Bye.
Thank you. Director Miller.
Through you Chair, Amos, to trustee Hajali. Can you schedule myself to come to Student Senate in the first meeting in January? I'll bring the information. We're going to be discussing the Burlington Par and some other issues, so you can speak. But I think it's important that we, and then we'll be coming back later to Student Senate to get some, their input into the Par process.
Okay, go ahead and do that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions for our student trustees? I'd like to thank you very much for your report and I hope that you're, have a good learning and networking weekend at the Osta Eko and that it all went well. Thank you. So we are now up to our information items. Are there any notices of motion tonight? Seeing none, so we'll go to our action items for December the 7th. Our first item is CAC membership. Superintendent Sonnenfeld, report 16168 on page 21 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Sonnenfeld.
Good evening, thank you. Through the Chair to trustees, you have before you a report on a change in membership at CAC. You can see that we've had two resignations of the CAC members for representing Halton Down Syndrome Association and two new members, Sophia Siddiki and Mike Brown, coming forward for, to represent Halton Down Syndrome. So this reports before you tonight and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Is there any urgency for us to waive the rules for to have this approved tonight?
If the rules are waived, that would allow these new members to officially participate at CAC. They've, they've been here in the gallery, but they could be officially in their spots at the December meeting if, if the rules were waived.
Okay, thank you. Is that what you wanted to speak to? Did you want to speak to it or?
I'll just move to waive the rules to deal with this, this evening.
Thank you. Seconded by trustee Daniele. Is there, did you want to? No. Okay, so we have a motion to waive the rules to, for this motion to come to us tonight. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, then? All those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with this appointment tonight?
In favor?
And that passes unanimously, thank you. So I will put the motion on the floor. Be resolved, the Halton District School Board approved the recommended appointments of Sophia Siddaki as the HDSB CAC representative and Mike Brown as the CAC alternate representative for the Halton Down Syndrome Association. Moved by?
I'd like to move that motion.
Trustee Papin, seconded by trustee Reynolds. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor?
In favor?
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Superintendent Sonnenfeld. So our next item is the Grade One FI Parent Information Evenings. Associate Director Boe, report 16167 on page 22 of your board package. Welcome back, Associate Director Boe, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you two trustees, this report outlines some details and a request for the Board to rescind a previous motion that, to have Grade One program evenings in all schools that offer Grade One. As trustees know, for next year, our Grade One class across the board will be full English program. There is no French immersion, and so the circumstances have changed a little bit. So all of our SK families right now will remain in their home schools and move into the Grade One program. The decision point is really in the following year when students move into Grade Two. So we've offered some suggestions, our current thinking about how we might manage that communication with parents in the report, but we're still really working on that because we've got a little bit of time for this year, just so that trustees know. We are looking at an online resource to help parents understand Grade One, even though, again, that communication will be ongoing within their school, but we will be producing a Grade One resource as well, and that's not identified in the report. Happy to answer any question, questions that trustees might have.
Thank you. Some comments and questions for the Associate Director, trustee Al Harrison.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. My question is, I fully support the development of online resources. I think that's great. It allows families to access information on their time and in whatever place is the most convenient. But I do wonder about for the Grade Two transition year, whether there'll be some kind of open house or some kind of opportunity for face-to-face dialogue for those important transition years. I often think that parents use that opportunity to, if they're moving to a new school, to check out that new school. Sometimes they bring their students to take a look around and to ask questions. So I feel that perhaps if that opportunity or something like it isn't there, that principals may be fielding, you know, 100 unique requests to come and take a look at the school. So I think that it may be worth a thought on that. Thanks.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair, to trustee Al Harrison. That's a great thought. We know that parents do like to have a look at, at the school when their kids are changing schools. I'm just going to look over to Superintendent Salmini, who's, who may have some additional comments around that.
Certainly, I echo the point that in terms of equity of access to information, the online resources would be really helpful to families, because we do know in the past that the Grade One evenings weren't always that well attended by all families because of scheduling constraints. So we want to make it easier for families to access information, to go back to information and check. I'm hearing your, your point about the face-to-face, and we, we did think that schools would answer individual questions from individual families, whether that be teachers or principals around questions that families may have when making the decision. One of the tools we wanted to develop was a Q and A also, based on questions that we know parents have, so that it will help to make a more informed decision. But certainly in our planning, we can, we can take back your thinking tonight.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. My comments are very similar to trustee Al Harrison. I really appreciate the online resource, but I do believe that the information sessions are important, just so that parents can get a feel for what the program looks like. But in addition, I would still like us to have a Grade One information night, because kindergarten is not a mandated program. A lot of parents will be entering the school system for their very first time in Grade One, and Grade One looks very different from kindergarten. Part of the Grade One information evenings that we provided was talking about what Grade One looks like, and they're still going to need that regardless of whether or not we have French immersion in Grade One. So I would actually like to see the Grade One evenings continue and to extend that to having a Grade Two evening in those schools that offer French immersion.
I'm just going to look over to Superintendent Padre Bear, because my understanding, although kindergarten is an optional program, is that we would have very few kids that would be coming to us straight into Grade One. And I guess some of the conversation that the group had around this issue was really that, that conversation should be ongoing through the SK year as teachers are talking with parents and those communications happening about the Grade One program, which will be in the same school. That was kind of some of the thinking.
Well, I can certainly, over 96% of, of our SKs, you know, we are in the system from SK to one, so, you know, we have the vast majority already in the system. The uptake in kindergarten is phenomenal. It's virtually universal now. Small segment are, are keeping kids out.
Through you Chair, Amos, to trustee Collard. If we remember the original intention of the Grade One parent nights were about the French, French immersion and the English programs. And I have a slightly different concern on, I'd be concerned about workload that we'd be asking principals they'd be having. Many of our principals are at the kindergarten nights, then they'd be at Grade One, and if it's school with French immersion, then there'll be a Grade Two nights. And also that the fact that most of the kindergarten students will be in their home schools for Grade One now, there'll be very few changing unless they move, but most of them will be in their own school. So, I mean, we could certainly look at it. I personally don't know the necessity of it though.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves. Oh, sorry, go ahead, trustee Collard.
When we originally had the Grade One evenings, they were actually called French Immersion Information Nights, and we brought a motion in the last board to change those to Grade One Information Nights. And about three quarters of the evening was then actually spent talking about the transition to Grade One. It wasn't about French immersion, only about a quarter of the presentation was about French immersion, and, and parents valued that. And I, and I believe that by taking that away, we've actually made that transition more difficult.
I think Superintendent Salmini has her response.
I agree with you, trustee Collard, that part, a big part of the evening was transition to Grade One. And so just a little bit more in terms of the planning that we're doing on the online resources. It would look like video slides with voiceover, very much similar to the presentations that were delivered across the system in all the different schools, but online with a consistent message for, for everybody. So we would look after those needs and we'd be partnering with the earlier folks to make sure that, that there is a consistent plan in terms of transition. Part of our multi-year plan work is also K1 transitions in terms of internal support. So we would make sure that whatever we're providing is quality and that it would include those pieces, because we know that they're very important.
Thank you very much.
Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I'm, I'm very comfortable with the online presentation of this information. Having sat through a few of these recently, it is very much, as one of my colleagues, trustee colleagues would say, a sit and get, and that I think is very conducive to, to online learning, and I think it's valuable, learning that be it Grade One or Grade Two. So I think my view is a little bit juxtaposed to some of my colleagues in that I feel that this is a decision about program. So, so again, I'm comfortable with it being online and not at individual schools, because I do think it's, it should be a decision about program and not about whether I go to this school or that school based on, you know, the, the school facilities. So my original comment is about equity and just a recognition that not everyone has a computer. And so I would just like to offer a suggestion that perhaps one regional meeting per municipality be offered for, for those perhaps who are not able to access the, the online resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I also agree that we should be rescinding the intent of the original motion, which was Grade One Information Nights for people to choose the programming. But we were forgetting that we also added a description about the gifted, primary gifted night, so it was actually a three-pronged kind of a presentation as well as just Grade One, so four if you count that. So I'm not too sure how that all plays out, but we, one would assume that from the SK to Grade One, they're either in their school already and staying, so some of the information could be presented through their teachers and teachers have the way of getting the information. I have a concern with dropping French immersion information nights from a, from a choice between one and two, because you would have the primary gifted would already be in place. So there would be choosing whether to leave primary gifted to go to French immersion, and you have schools that are single-track French immersion. And so you do have a necessity to, regardless of whether it is actually the program that you're learning about, I would not necessarily think a parent would make that decision without actually figuring out where the school is and what, just meeting the prin, like those kinds of things, the same as you would for calling all three-year-olds when you're starting a new community. Also, that 96% might be really good, but we have traditionally in Ward Three had an entire class or two show up never being in Halton Kindergartens. They're in private schools. I don't know yet, because we haven't seen it. We don't know whether they're going to stay in private school for Grade One and then change because of the fact that they're moving to a single track. So do you change them twice or do you just change them once? We don't know that yet. So I think for the Oakville and Burlington single-track French immersion schools, there's still a need for some kind of an open house. It doesn't necessarily need to be when it was. It could be, I've seen other boards do them in November, so that you're starting the thinking process sooner and not January, just before you're supposed to hand in the form. You know, you could do them spread out, but I do like the idea of the online information. But for, I think there are, they're going to need a mixture and a hybrid of all of this.
Thank you, Director Miller.
Through you Chair, Amos. I understand the trustees' concerns, but I have to admit that I, I have somewhat of a concern, because it has been the will of this board at times for us to use technology and reach out in that way, and this is an attempt to do so, and it would appear... And it would appear as though it's not to replace anything and make things more efficient, but it's an add-on now. So now we're using technology and we're using presentations. I'm concerned about, and I think it's a legitimate concern about workload with our staffs, that we're producing online materials, then we're going to be doing open houses as well. I'm not saying it can't be either or. I particularly like the suggestion of Vice Chair Graves around regional, but I think we have to be careful of the slippery slope here. If we're going to use technology, its intention is not necessarily to replace open houses, but I don't think that we just carry on as business as usual and then add this as well. And that would be somewhat of my concern for our staff, who work extremely hard, so.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair. I support the use of the technology. I just wonder if there would be an opportunity to have a Q and A section, because I'm wondering how parents would get questions answered if everything was through the technology field in terms of the form of presentation.
Go ahead.
Through you, Chair Amos, to trustee Gray. We will actually be, I was going to talk about it in director's report, but next Monday we are doing a Q and A livestreamed on Burlington Par, and that would be an interesting pilot to see how successful that operates. And I could see that in the future, where we have Superintendent Selminia and a few principals in a central location doing one or two nights of a Q and A livestream as a possibility. I'm not saying that's the way we're going, but as a possibility. But that's one of the things that we've thought of.
Thank you. Trustee Gavins.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Amos. I just wanted to say that I actually really like Vice Chair Graves' idea, and married with the online Q and A. I think we're covering a lot of bases there and not taking up a lot of staff time.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
I guess I have a couple of follow-up questions along the lines of, I think the workload for doing the presentation has been considerably ameliorated with having the online, same as when, a couple of years ago, we standardized the presentation, because I think it's the presentation that, to some extent, is a good chunk of the angst and the workload. But I think the tour part and the come see what French immersion classrooms look like, or what a primary gifted classroom looks like, or what kindergarten looks like, the tour part, the making the children, the part that includes the children. You may find that the schools are still doing it, and I still think that the single-track schools at least should be allowed to do it, because that's going to be an issue. They've often had to do it even for the ones who have to switch schools. They end up with the open house anyway. And then the piece about the technology is, yes, we want people to use technology, but as Vice Chair Graves said, not everybody has it, and not everybody knows how to get there on the HDSB website. So it might mean that, yes, you can have the technology, but the link is going to have to be on the school website, because they're not going to know necessarily how to find it. It should be duplicated in the school links and the school board website links.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions tonight on this topic? Seeing none, this will come back on December the 7th for approval. Thank you very much, Associate Director. The next item is the trustee professional development. Trustee Collard, report 16172 on page 24 of your board package. Trustee Collard.
Thank you. Last week at our committee of the whole meeting, it was suggested that these requests come in one report in late November, so that we can plan for these events, some of which occur as early as January. So I compiled it and put it together, and it is there for your reading pleasure to vote on in three weeks.
Thank you. Is there any comments or questions? Trustee Daniele.
I just have one. I'm in, I think, thank you for doing this and putting it together. It was a fair amount of work. I have one question. Each of them ends, the trustees who attended will provide the board with an update, and I'm wondering if perhaps over the next two weeks, we can come up with a common understanding of what providing the board with an update is. If 11 trustees go to PEZ, do all 11 write a report to the board? Or just if we can have that discussion the next two weeks, that when we do vote on it, we have a better understand, a common understanding of what update is.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
I also forgot to mention that in the write-up, I have the year 2015 listed as the date for the trustee reserve account, and it should be 2016. Thank you very much, Ms. Gordmaker.
Thank you. Trustee Oliver.
Thank you. Through your chair. I agree with trustee Daniele. I flag that for myself as well. Some kind of a standard template on what and who should be reporting would be very beneficial, and I'm thinking maybe that's something that we could discuss at the committee of the whole and then bring forward to the board.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Committee of the whole was on my mind as well, and I'm thinking a lot of these conferences, there's excellent, excellent training that perhaps even rather than a written report, a verbal and a discussion and a sharing of the resources that were gathered at that conference might make a good committee of the whole meeting, in fact, to share that amongst all 11 trustees, because I know not everyone is able to go to each, every piece. But if we could have trustees covering those four conferences and then having the discussion, getting the benefit of all of the learning from all four here, that would be fantastic.
Thank you. So is there any other comments or questions on this motion to come back in two weeks? Three weeks. Seeing none. Thank you very much, trustee Collard. Our next item is respectful workplaces. Vice Chair Graves and trustee Collard, report 16173 on page 27 of your board package. Which of you would like to speak to it?
I would like to defer to the director.
Thank you, and I'm going to defer to General Manager Taha. Because I can do it. Good.
So again, this is a policy that we're introducing with respect to workplace. Currently in Halton, most of our policies explicitly speak to discrimination, harassment. This is a policy that we believe speaks to the overarching concept of a respectful, courteous, and equitable workplace. That is something that we're proposing to bring forward.
Did you want to add something? Okay. Thank you very much, General Manager Taha. Trustee Collard or Vice Chair Graves, is there any urgency to this, to have the rules waived so it could be posted sooner? Trustee Collard.
Yes, I was going to suggest that the second motion could be, if the rules could be waived for the second motion, we could get this on the website that much more quickly instead of waiting the additional three weeks. And I would be happy to make the motion to waive the rules for the second motion.
So you're splitting the recommendation, so the second part of the recommendation, you're waiving the rules so that the respectful workplaces policy can be posted to the website, correct? Go ahead, Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos, and I appreciate that, trustee Collard. That will help us coming into the new year. As you know, workplaces are challenging places at times, and there's conflicting situations and circumstances, and we work, and all our staff work to ensure that we have respectful workplaces for all those who work here, and ultimately, that's supportive of the students in our system. This provides us a little more teeth, and I would suggest that the sooner that we can put it in place, the better it is for us as a staff, and ultimately, the better it is for our students. So thank you for that, trustee Collard.
Thank you. Could I have a second here for waiving the rules? Trustee Gavins, is there any discussion on waiving the rules? Trustee Harvey Hope, is that about waiving the rules?
No, mine's on the wording of the waived motion, so I will wait.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of waiving the rules to deal with the respectful workplace policy to be posted to the web? Trustee Hasali didn't sign in. So that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So I will put the second motion on the floor. Be it resolved, the Halton District School Board's respectful workplaces policy as appended to, oh, I'll put it on the floor, and then you can speak to it. Is that okay? As appended to report 16173, be posted on the board's website for public input for a period not less than 25 days, and any input returned to the board for consideration in January 2017. Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Oliver. Discussion. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I was trying to do quick math to figure out whether 25 days, I couldn't quite remember calendar business, whether December 7th we could pass it, but it's too tight. So we don't, unless we end up with another board meeting in December, I guess it will be coming back for approval as early as we can in January. Okay, thanks.
So any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Mm-hmm. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on the first part of the recommendation? That'll come back in three weeks. Yes? Trustee Collard.
I don't know if the first part requires a waiving of the rules, and I would like to ask Mr. Taha's opinion as to whether or not the rules need to be waived for the first part, just because I know that part of this is legislative, and I want to make sure that we're compliant.
The legislative part refers to the discrimination and harassment policy and the discrimination and harassment AP. The new AP also captures the, the amended AP captures also, speaks to the respectful workplace policy, which is also legislated. So it's mandated, it's required by Bill 132, these amendments. So I don't see any problem with waiving the rules with respect to the APs specifically and the discrimination and harassment policy.
But is there a need to? Director Miller.
Through your chair, Amos, trustees, the discrimination and harassment policy is legislation. So, yeah, the answer to your question is yes. There is no issue with waiving the rules, and in fact, it's not even posted for 25 days because it's legislation, so.
So then I would move for the rules to be waived for this item as well, since it is legislated.
Thank you. So I have a motion to waive the rules on this, the discrimination and harassment policy. Do I have a second here? Trustee Gavins. Is there any other discussion before I put it on the table about waiving the rules? Seeing none? Okay, all those in favor of waiving the rules? That passes unanimously. Thank you. So I'll put it on the floor. Be it resolved, that the Halton District School Board's discrimination and harassment policy, as amended and appended to report 16173, be approved. Moved by trustee Collard, seconded by trustee Oliver. Any further discussion? Trustee Harvey Hope.
I'm in favor of the policy being passed tonight. I just want to note for the record that it will be adjusted for our format in that losing the two weeks, three weeks, whatever in between to have those changes made. So the format that it's in now will not be the format that it ends up on the website, but the content will be the same, so.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, so we'll now move on to our next topic, which is the audit committee report. Trustee Gray and Superintendent Beerman, report 16169 on page 30 of your board package. Trustee Gray.
Thank you. Through the chair. Each year, the audit committee must file two annual reports, one to the Board of Trustees and one to the Ministry of Education. As you can see in the annual reports attached to this, there is a summary of the activities of the audit committee, as well as the activities of the HDSB internal, the external, and the regional internal auditors. I think the report itself speaks to all of the activities, but in specifically looking at the summary of the work performed, looking at the fact that the audit committee followed up on issues discussed at meetings, began drafting terms of reference, and discussed external, internal, and regional internal audit assessments. So very fulsome series of meetings were held, and the report as it stands is before you, a very nice summary of all of the activities. Thank you.
Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos. Before we talk about, discuss the audit committee, I would like to acknowledge that at the last audit committee meeting, we had a longtime servant to the Halton District School Board and the Audit Committee, Bob Broshardt. He's finished, he's left, and we're very grateful, I wanted to say this publicly at a board meeting, we're very grateful for the work Bob has done for the HDSB and in particular, the Audit Committee. He's a wealth of knowledge and has been very helpful to us as a board and helping us keep in line with our financial requirements and commitments. In respect and honor of Bob, we have, we will be providing a bursary or a scholarship, however you want to describe it, to an alder shot graduating student in the business area. So I know Bob's not here, and he's probably not listening, but I just wanted to say thanks, Bob, so.
I believe that we all echo your thanks, and that the fact that, I believe, the Audit Committee is looking for someone else. Is there any other comments or questions around this audit committee report? Trustee Collard.
I noticed that on the first page, Jean Gray is listed as being the chair for 2015-16 and the chair for 2016-17, and I believe that's a typo. It's been corrected. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on this report? Seeing none, this will come back in three weeks for approval. Thank you very much. So our next item is the audit, sorry, the accumulated surplus. Superintendent Beerman, report 16159 on page 34 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Beerman.
Thank you. Through the chair, it's a pleasure to present the year-end financial statements to the board. I have a very
Thank you, through the chair. It's a pleasure to present the year-end financial statements to the Board. I have a very short PowerPoint presentation. I'd like to first begin by publicly acknowledging the staff in the Business Services Department that are instrumental in preparing this information in a timely and very efficient manner. Part of the staff is here, Jackie Sweetman, Controller of Financial Services, Carrie Salemi, Manager of Financial Services, Heather Camastro, who is on maternity leave, and all of the staff that support them. So I'd like to first begin by publicly acknowledging them to this evening. In terms of the financial statements, the Halton District School Board continues to be fiscally responsible with a clear focus on providing the system with the resources and supports necessary to ensure that we inspire and support learning, create safe and engaging environments and provide opportunities for challenge and choice. In terms of the financial statements, the 2015-16 statements reflect the financial results of both the operating and capital activity for the Board. Included in the statements are the Halton District School Board and also the Fast Track Community Center for Skills Development and Training, which is similar to prior years. We have met all of the reporting requirements that are necessary to prepare the financial statements with respect to the Education Act and other requirements under the Public Sector Accounting Board from the Chartered Professional Accountants of Canada. In terms of the statements, management's responsibility are to prepare the consolidated financial statements in accordance with the basis of accounting as described in Note 1, to provide access to all records and documentation to the auditors, to ensure that we provide internal controls to enable the preparation of the statements to be free from material misstatement. With respect to the auditor's responsibility, it's their responsibility to express an opinion on the financial statements based on their audit conducted in accordance with Canadian generally accepted auditing standards and to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the consolidated statements are free from material misstatement. The external auditors are Deloitte LLP Chartered Accountants and included in the report is their opinion and it is an unmodified opinion, which indicates that all the financial statements have been prepared according to the requirements and are free from material misstatements. In terms of the Audit Committee, Trustee Gray and Trustee Ann Harvey Hope did present a report with respect to the activities of the Audit Committee. It is a regulation, a requirement of regulation, that an Audit Committee is in place, consisting of three trustee representatives and two external public representatives. The Committee did meet on November 8th, reviewed the financial statements and did provide a motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees approval of the financial statements. In terms of highlights, the year ending 2015-16, we ended in a strong financial position with an operating surplus of approximately $5.5 million, which represents approximately 0.075 of 1% of the approved budget. In addition, as has been noted in the report, we were fortunate this year to have a few items that are considered one-time issues that were not part of the approved budget since those items were not known at the time the budget was approved and has resulted in additional revenue for the year of approximately $10.4 million. And again, the details are noted in the report. In terms of the annual surplus, just very briefly, since this sometimes does cause a little bit of confusion, the annual surplus that is reported in financial statements is based on the Public Sector Accounting Board definition. So it does include some items that, such as capital assets and employee future benefits, which are restricted by regulation or legislation and therefore are not available to support operating initiatives. So even though in the financial statements it does make reference and the terminology is annual surplus, not all of those dollars are available for operating purposes since they must be set aside through regulation, legislation. And similar to that is the accumulated surplus. It replaces the traditional definition or description of what we used to refer to as reserve and reserve funds and it does represent the net financial resources of the Board. And additional details are included in both Note 11 and Appendix A as part of the report. And again, it does provide details in terms of the various categories of funds that are available for the Board through, for operating purposes and those that, again, are unavailable as a result of regulation or legislation. In terms of the report itself, there is a motion or recommendation that does provide, recommendation, again, a motion to transfer some of the year-end surplus to accumulated surplus. It's divided into various categories, the first being year-end roll-forwards, consistent with prior years for funds that for various reasons have not been spent at year-end. They are, again, requested to be carried forward. And then there's a few items that fall under the category of student achievement. The details are included in the report with respect to the rationale for putting those forward. So they're into six categories, professional development, the special education review that's currently underway, program viability review, so based on the motion that was presented and approved in June with respect to some of the changes in French immersion and the English program, an allocation to provide support for that, for that funding or for that program. The accommodation review that's currently underway, both the bar and the boundary review, there'll be some expenditures incurred with respect to that. Also, you recall when the budget was approved in June, there was, as part of the approval, a motion to take a portion of the surplus, roughly $3.5 million, since at the time that the budget was discussed, we were projecting a surplus for the year-end. So in order to mitigate some of the reductions that were eventually considered, there was a motion to take from the projected 15-16 year-end surplus to provide some transition for 16-17. And also, there is quite a bit of information with respect to the future administrative facility in terms of reports that have been prepared and provided as information to trustees in the past. And again, information with respect to if this allocation or this amount is approved, what the final amount would be for a potential future admin facility, recognizing that although if this motion is passed, any decision with respect to moving forward would still have to come back to the trustees for final approval. So even though this is included in the report, any future decision would have to come back to the trustees for final approval. So in terms, again, of the recommendation included on page 34, it's a two-part. It, again, provides for a motion to transfer to accumulated surplus and also to recommend approval to, for the Board to approve the audit at financial statements. Just one notation on page 34, I believe the recommendation that was part of the prior report has also been duplicated in this report in error, so that's just a note. Again, subsequent to board approval, the financial statements must be submitted to the Ministry and they are, as in prior years, posted on the Board website. And at this time, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your report and I'd just like to say thank you to you and to everyone involved for pulling all this information together and creating this report, because I know there is a lot of hard work and a lot of effort put into making it clear and readable and understandable, so thank you very much to everyone involved. Comments and questions? Trustee Oliver?
Thank you, through your chair, to Superintendent Bearman. Having a mandate for education, I'm glad to see that we are spending money on instruction. I'm just curious if you could elaborate on what accounts for the increase under the expenses instruction line between 2016 and 2015? I'm seeing an increase of about $16 million. If I'm reading that correctly, page five of the attachment? Of the financial statements?
Thank you, through the chair. As the Board is aware, when the 15-16 budget was initially in its discussion stages, the collective agreements provincially had not been negotiated or the negotiations were not complete. So at the time that the budget approved, the final outcome of those negotiations were not included in the budget. So subsequent to the budget, both the revenue component was increased to reflect the final results of those negotiations and also the corresponding increase in expenditures, mainly salary and benefits. In addition, when the budget is approved, the Ministry does provide funding for what we call EPO programs, which are education program others. Those are generally programs that have a very specific purpose and those are often announced throughout the year. So when we get to the end of the year, we reflect both under the revenues and the instruction portion of the budget, the actual, again, revenues and expenditures with respect to those. So many of those are not known at the time the budget is approved, so we do see corresponding increase both on the budget and prior year's actuals, but it's mainly as a result of the contract negotiations.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say also, I guess, using my hat of Chair of Finance and Accountability, thank you very much for the transparency that I'm starting seeing and all the improvements cumulatively. I think this is possibly year seven, but I mean, you've been at, you've had some, had a big impact on what we're presenting and how we're presenting it and that is being shown through on how much faster we get through these now than we used to. So I appreciate all of the detail that you have in here and that, that the receptiveness of the suggestions over the years of things, just to make them more easily readable, but also to put it out to anybody who is actually watching in the live stream or otherwise, that if there are any queries that the public has about the readability of the financial statements or if they have any other questions, that we would like to hear those. So, because we try to make them readable, but we are actually intimately familiar with a lot of this detail and so sometimes the question somebody might have that just looks at them for the first time, we might not think of, so just putting that out there.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. Thank you for this report. I have two questions with respect to recommendation number one. The first is under student achievement and accommodation review and I wonder whether, if it is determined that other accommodation reviews were to proceed this year as per the LTAP, whether there would be monies available for those as well? And then secondly, with respect to the accommodation line, my recollection is that the anticipated cost of an admin facility is roughly $30 million, so should this pass, we would be at approximately 23, which is quite a large, over about 70% of the funds set aside. So my question is, is this a scenario where we need to have all of the funds before anything can take place or is there phasing? I'm not sure, thanks.
Superintendent Bearman?
With respect to any potential future accommodation reviews, certainly if there is a decision to move forward through the revised estimate process, that's an opportunity to set money aside if need be.
Director Miller?
Through your chair, Amos, to Trustee L. Harrison and all trustees, it's a very good question. The Ministry has not been financing or allowing financing of admin buildings, so although we have nothing in writing, it would be our belief that we would probably need all or almost all of the money prior to doing it, as this is the patterns around the Board, the province.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on the 2015-16 financial statements and accumulated surplus balances that will be coming back to us in three weeks? Trustee Harvey Hope?
Through you, to Madam, through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Bearman. Because of the way all our board meetings are following this year, I seem to recall the tight deadlines were usually somewhere earlier than December 7th, so do we have an issue with our board meeting being on December 7th and the deadline for the financial statements to be sent to the Ministry?
Through the chair, we have advised the Ministry of the schedule of the board meetings, so they are aware that the financial statements will be presented again at December 7th meeting. We have, however, filed the EFIS forms, which are the grant forms to the Ministry, they were due today, but they are filed with a proviso that if, for whatever reason, the information as has been prepared or submitted needs to be changed as a result of trustee motions, that we will come forward with those changes.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, this will come back on December 7th. Thank you. Thank you very much Superintendent Bearman and to the rest of these, your staff. So we are now up to our information items for tonight. First item is self-paced learning. Superintendent Hunt Givens, report 16163 on page 76 of your board package. Superintendent Hunt Givens?
Hello, everyone. Good evening. You have in front of you a report on, it's a self-paced learning update. It is a series of reports since 2013 that chronicles the implementation of the self-paced learning program within our high schools. It identifies the growth, the successes and some of the challenges and if there are any questions specific to any of those, I would be happy to answer those for you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on the report that's here tonight? Trustee Reynolds?
Thank you, through the chair. I have a couple of questions, just, I think, for clarity for myself and also for the public, please. So one of the things that I would hope that you could clarify is? What differentiates the digital hub for the SPL from the e-learning? Because I was reading that that was a very important place to connect. How does that differentiate?
Through the chair to Trustee Reynolds. E-learning and the digital hub, self-paced learning, people often confuse all of them because they all can be done at a self-paced model, but they don't have to be done on a self-paced model. So e-learning is an initiative within our Board and students can sign up and take e-learning. When they do, our model is that their course starts and ends at the same timelines as a regular high school course, unless they're in self-paced e-learning. And self-paced e-learning is more of a continuous entry model and we have fewer courses and those are listed in the report where you see some of the maths and English on page number two, which identifies which math and English are offered in that model. So when you look to the appendix, which is the hub of courses, these are courses that are all been developed and vetted through to support our self-paced learning teachers in providing a program to students in the schools. So if you were the self-paced learning teacher and perhaps your background was English, but you are supporting a student as they're working through a history course, there wouldn't be an expectation that you would recreate all of those materials. You would look to the hub and you could do so in a more traditional manner, you could do so in a blended learning manner, you can have an online platform to that as well. And that is all of the courses in that appendix that we support our self-paced learning teachers with in the delivery of program to the students who are choosing that model.
Thank you. Trustee Gray? Thank you, through the chair, to Superintendent Hunt Givens. On page 79 of the report, second paragraph, there's an indication that since not all students wishing to do self-paced learning are in risk, it's an area where we need to monitor and assess as well as potentially examine our staffing model. Could you elaborate on how the staffing model might be?
Could you elaborate on how the staffing model might be negatively or positively affected by the flow of students into self-paced learning?
Certainly through the chair to trustee Gray. Student success, it refers to a group of initiatives within the ministry and they receive their own funding for those. So they are generally initiatives that support students who are in risk or at risk, the definition being one referring to credits and accumulation and the other two personal circumstance. And those aren't always the students who take our programs. So we have students who are taking self-paced learning, who are doing so not because they're at risk of failing or not because of circumstance within their personal life that is necessarily to a detriment. But so, for example, we have students, I can think of a student who is an opera singer who performs, you know, on shows for three weeks at a time, national level athletes who go away and come back, students who are performers and athletes of various kinds who need the flexibility, students who want a course that doesn't exist in their home school, but they're, they very much want to be able to take it. So we're serving the needs of students who we wouldn't report on as in any way being at risk or part of our student success programs and initiatives. And right now, we are able to staff that model and serve those students. So the comment is, is if this program grew and grew, we might have to consider staffing model, staffing complement, who's doing, how we're doing it and how we're funding it.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Thank you very much for this report. I always appreciate reading the annual report on self-paced learning. Many of you around the table were not around the table at the time that trustee Nancy McNeil brought this forward as a request for us to look into the possibilities of self-paced learning and ways of providing that to our students. And so I'm always heartened when I read the report and see how successful it is. And so thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Oh, thank you. I have two questions through Madam Chair. One was, is there a equivalent drop date mechanism? Because it talked about how the successful course completion rate was not as high as in the other mechanisms. And it just occurred to me that one of the reasons may be course completion rates are after some students have dropped the course, sort of before it counts as a drop. So I'm wondering whether or not that is coming into play in the statistics, whether or not because of it being self-paced, what date do you pick that you say, okay, you've changed your mind, we're going to pretend you never took it? So that was my first question.
Okay. Through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope. Self-paced is a little bit more difficult to track because of exactly what you said. Students could be working ahead or they could be working at a slower pace. We track based on the assumption that if you're starting in the fall, we'd like you to finish by the end of the year. However, we also allow for leeway if a student requires to go into a third semester. But generally, we say self-paced gives you two semesters to do the work of one semester. If you require a third, then we can have conversations about that and then make our decisions that way. But I think one of the reasons you see the lower stat when you're looking at that has to do with one of the challenges that is with self-paced learning is that the learning skills that are required and the face-to-face piece that, for lack of a better word, a nag factor of having someone there all the time and chasing you for it. Some students who will, who will sign up for self-paced will discover that it's not for them, or they thought that they were able to do something that they're not able to balance, especially those when we're talking about a high performer. So it's not necessarily a struggling student. It's someone who says, I think I can do all of these things as well as take this course. And then they've discovered that they're not able to. So we do see lower completion rates of the course.
Do you want me to ask my second question? No. Do you want me to put myself back on?
Yes, please. Thank you. Trustee Gervens.
Thank you through you, Chair Amos. I think this report is fabulous. The one question I have, and it's more from, you know, an outside kind of view, the, all the course codes on page 80 are lovely, but they don't mean much to the general public. And I was wondering if there's any way we can match that up with actual courses because there, it looks to be quite a breadth of offerings there. And I would love to be able to show that off. And I can't, it's alphabet soup right now.
Through the chair to trustee Gervens. It will make for a much longer report because each title is very, very long. But point taken. One thing that would help anyone who was looking at it is to look at the first character, which generally shows, if you look to that page and you see the A, you're looking at arts, the Bs are all of our business courses going down, the Cs are the geographies and the histories, the economics, civics, down to politics, then we get into ESLs, English courses that go through humanities, family studies. We get into interdisciplinary courses, mathematics, as well as the literacy course, Health for Life and Online Phys Ed, sciences in the form of biology and chemistry, earth science, all the way down to a few of our technologies. So I feel like I've just passed a quiz on course codes.
That's pretty amazing.
Director Miller.
Through Chair Amos to Superintendent Hunt Givens. No, I'm only kidding. These, but the actual course names are listed somewhere, right? I wonder if we could just have a link, showing the link from here to where the actual course names are.
Yeah, so if this, if this is online, if these were all linked, then somebody could actually just click on the link, right?
Yes, and I guess to clarify the will of the group, any of these courses are within the ministry documents. This list is, it's published as one that is published internally to teachers who are teaching in self-paced, who are looking for supports when a student is coming to them and saying, you know, what, I need to do something self-paced, what can I possibly take that I haven't taken already? And this helps them plan that individualized program.
So if they Google it within our website, they'd be able to find it, but that's each individual one, right?
If you're a student looking for the information, your easiest way is to talk to the teacher with your particular personal counseling summary in front of you to put together a plan that's very individualized for you and the program that you need. If the public were looking simply to know just the breadth and depth of what we're doing, then certainly I could add an amendment with the list of courses.
Maybe it's just a headline with the arts, English, business, as opposed to each individual course outline.
And through the chair, to the chair, just to clarify as well, one thing that we have to do within self-paced is we have to balance on the workload for teachers. And so rather than a menu where students would select, because we wouldn't want any one teacher trying to do 90 different, perhaps, part of it is clustering them to make it work within a school. So they'll cluster and say, I have three students who are currently working on civics and you need civics as well, this is going to work. But if every student was selecting and running, we would, that would be an issue for us at this point.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Could you, through the chair, would like to understand what the student-teacher ratio is and how is that similar or different to the e-learning student-to-teacher ratio?
Through, through the chair to trustee Reynolds. So the, the e-learning, if you're taking an online course, is, because it has the stop and start dates, it's like any other course. It's based on the number of students, the level of the course, and our collective agreement within there. Self-paced becomes a little more difficult because self-paced and our student success teachers within the building, they are often doing other things as well, and they're trying to make this work. And we all know that nobody can be all things for all people, although they're trying very hard. So part of that balancing and what works is we're not setting a firm number, we're working through to look at as well as the other factors around the students who are in the room and what works in terms of serving the whole child needs in the particular case and not just the ability to say, what are you working on? Because often in a student success model, we are working on more than simply giving and taking assignments.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you through the chair to Superintendent Hunt Givens. In report 15152 dated November 11, 2015, there were 31 courses on the list. Now we've gone to 116 courses, 60 of which are, I think, noted above that they are targeted courses. So I think that's a wonderful reflection of a lot of work on behalf of a lot of individuals to create these courses so that we can be very inclusive and have a course offering that would meet the needs of so many students. So I have a question on stats. We keep stats on the completion rates of students in the e-learning, the credit rescue and the self-paced learning, and it's noted in your report. However, I'm wondering, do we keep stats on the success of the students who have successfully completed these courses, who then move on to the next level of course? Do we, do we know that these student courses are helping our students to be successful in the next level of course that they may take after they've completed a self-paced learning, e-learning or credit rescue course?
Through the chair to trustee Graves. We keep a lot of statistics and we are required to report through, to the ministry on them. And in the student success realm, we report through something called taking stock. And many of these courses are part of the 30, but do not necessarily have another course that follows. So when a student is taking their eight, their 18 or their compulsory or their core, then they may be choosing out of interest. They may be choosing something that is a compulsory, but unless it's English, it's not compulsory every year. And so in terms of how it's setting them up to do the next level, I wouldn't be able to comment on that. But I could tell you that credit completion rates and very much tie into when we are tracking the number of students who are achieving 16 credits by age 16, who are on track to graduate, our graduation rates, as well as the students who are school leavers or are part of our re-engagement, all of those factors that tie into successful completion of your OSSD. So those factors are all, are all tracked. And I can tell you that this program, and as you have so nicely noted, the expansion of it to serve student need is making a difference as part of our student success program. But I wouldn't be able to answer your specific question, I'm sorry.
Thank you, trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Let's get through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Hunt Givens. This gets kind of tricky in that, as you mentioned, it's not, it's not a list that one wants necessarily for students to pick from in lieu of the normal classroom courses. On the other hand, we also talk about how in certain schools with certain timetables, it's hard to get the course a student either desires or needs. And so I'm wondering how we're doing as far as communicating this as an option, because I have sat through many course selection nights and the self-paced angle, even if it is narrowly focused and it says, if you find yourself in a situation where you've got those three classes you want to take and they're all in period two semester two, this is an option. Like even if you wanted to focus it down to not keeping it wide open, but keeping it open for the students that you want it to be used for, I haven't seen yet, and it may be because we've expanded recently, but I haven't yet seen the communication out to parents that this is a viable option for those kinds of situations. Because as we talked about a few weeks ago, it isn't just the small schools that have this problem, it's also the schools where you're taking those specialized grade 11 or 12 courses that if you take too many of them, you could easily get into a situation where you can't fit it all in. And this might be a self-paced option in your spare, might give you that, the option, like the, the way to get that around that problem.
Through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope. You're correct in that our growth has been very deliberate and very measured. And that because we are funded through student success and if we put it out to everyone, I think we would have a very large uptake. So we have been measured in that. For the situation you're discussing, our first go-to position would be an online course if we were talking about a grade 11 student or not, where kids are, students are signing up for options and options are conflicting within. So our self-paced becomes something that is differentiated by personal circumstance, generally happens in the counselor's office when you're called down to say that there's a conflict within your timetable. And then based on what your pathway is, let's see how we can solve your conflict. And we might solve your conflict by taking an online course, we might be solving it through self-paced, but we do not put it in the course book because we would not be able to staff it if we did.
Thank you. Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. Do we know the costs that are associated with this growth? The report summarizes that there's, you know, teacher workload, tracking, timetabling. Do we know what kind of costs are associated with this?
Through the chair to trustee Reynolds. Most of the costs that are associated with the program come through the cost of staffing. And so when we get our, our funding and the sections that we have, and I think I make reference in the report to the number of sections that are currently running. So as part of the 244 sections allocated to student success for this year, then self-paced is but one piece of that. So we are, we have to run tracking and monitoring. So it's all that data collection that was referenced earlier. Credit recovery. We have school-determined programming within student success as well as programs such as access and LEAP. So some schools may be running the Ontario Literacy Course through that, depending what they're doing. So they have sections that go out to them, they have certain things they must do with those sections, and they have a little bit of leeway in order to meet their specific need within that community. So, you know, you might have a high school that had 10 sections and they used four for tracking and monitoring, two for credit recovery, two for self-paced, two in a school-determined fashion and none for a program such as access and LEAP. And then someone else would have a different distribution of those sections. But we do mandate through the Student Success Secondary Program Department that every school has to have the four for tracking and monitoring, must have two for credit recovery and must have two for self-paced. So that flexible piece isn't the majority, it's the minority. And the cost is within there because those are sections, sections are attached to people and therefore the costs are about the human resources.
Thank you. And seeing no further questions, I'd like to thank you very much for your report tonight. I think there's a lot of great information here and it shows just how far we've come in the last number of years. So thank you very much Superintendent Hunt Givens. So our next item is the EA allocation process. Superintendent Zonafield, report 16166 on page 81 of your board package. Welcome Superintendent Zonafield.
Thank you. Through the chair, trustees, you have before you a report in response to a board motion. I think this latest date is 2015, but it might even have been before that, I'm not sure. But this was a request for us to do a review of our EA allocation process. And you can see that we involved quite a few. process. And you can see that we involved quite a few voices in this process, quite a bit of involvement with CAC. And so we're finally here with what I feel is a very strong report, making some great recognition of our process that is quite solid and does a number of things very well, but at the same time, certainly has some areas for growth and improvement. So you see the recommendations there that have come forward with this. This report has been to CAC and received really strong support there as well. So I think I'll leave it at that, and welcome any comments or questions.
Thank you. Trustee L. Harrison.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate the amount of work and collaboration that's gone into the recommendations and specific items around how they could be potentially implemented. My question is around, what page am I on? I'm on page 83. And the first point around voice, structures and processes must be in place to access student and parent guardian voice. And then when I look down below at the voice section, there all seem to mention parents and guardians, which is great. But I wonder where that student voice piece comes in, given that it is critical, particularly for these students, I think, to have some say in how they're accommodated.
Through the Chair to Trustee L. Harrison. Thanks for this question. It's certainly our practice in many ways that we include students as much as possible in their education, specifically students with special needs around things like the types of supports they receive, their involvement in the development of the IP, what programming looks like. Those things are part of our regular practice. I mentioned to you earlier that that's a great observation, that we mentioned that in our goals at the top, and yet it's missing in this recommendation area. So it's certainly an area that we want to improve upon. And so our next step with this report is the development of an implementation plan. So when we go down that road, that we will look at how to also improve student voice, because there, the parent voice is certainly important, but student voice as well, in terms of what this process looks like around the resources that are brought to bear to support students. And so we'll look at that as well when we develop our implementation plan.
Hello?
Sure. And I think that's great. And I just, you know, I reflect on the committee membership, for example, and, you know, they're all, I don't know if there's a student senator, for example, that in future processes could be involved to provide that student voice, because it almost stands to reason that, you know, they're all adults on this committee and parents. And so, a lot of those recommendations are tailored to their needs. So I think that kind of getting that student voice as processes start out would help to build those recommendations.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Yes, through Madam Chair to Superintendent Zonfeld. You've just spoken about an implementation plan, which is the next step in this committee report. And I'm wondering if, because I didn't see it in this report, some address or some accountability to the timeliness of the assignment of EAs, or the determination of where EAs should be positioned. And I'm wondering if your implementation plan may have a timeline as to how the process may be put in place so that it's sort of speedy or delivery, if you would. I think we've seen times where we've had EAs, a combination of EAs assigned or supported by the board partway through the year. And I'm wondering if we could, through this report, perhaps, address the timeframe in which this happens.
Through the Chair to Trustee Gray, for sure. That's another area we can consider. It's, I don't think that was considered within the scope of this review, but it is a factor for sure. So I know that students and parents and staff sometimes are waiting, you know, while staff are determining. One of the trying things we're cautious about is that sometimes staff or parents jump to the NEA as the answer. And so, we want to ensure that things like classroom programming, strategies, other resources are considered before we go to an NEA as the solution. So, but that timing is certainly can be a factor. So we'll look at that as well.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Zonfeld. Thank you very much for this report. I find it very meaty and logical, and very good information going forward. And so, but I also wanted to say that one of the pieces that's missing is that you weren't actually late in bringing back the report, because we did actually give you till November. So just to acknowledge that, because the motion that you referenced says, you know, you were supposed to have it here in February, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes that, no, we knew how meaty this topic was. And then I appreciate that when we did have, by board motion, a deferral to November. And so, you didn't put that in your report, but I wanted to acknowledge that, so that people don't think that you were, that the whole department was running late. We were asking for so many things. And I can say that from the quality of the report that we got back, obviously the process worked really well, and that the extra time was well worth it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Miller.
Through your Chair, Amos, to Trustee Harvey Hope. Just to add to that, if you recall, another factor in that was, shall we say, the labor issues at the time. And we wanted to ensure that, well Superintendent Zonfeld wanted to ensure that he had staff representation on this, and it was difficult to do during those negotiations and so on, for various reasons. So there's, that was the other factor involved in this. And I'm glad Superintendent Zonfeld waited until the collective agreements were resolved, so we could include our staff, we get a better report. So, thanks.
Thank you. And I'd like to also thank you for this report, because, and through you to everyone who was involved, because I know there was many, many, many hours of discussion, and this was something that was taken very seriously, and it's very obvious from the report that's come back. So thank you very much for it and the recommendations. And I know that all trustees do appreciate it, and I know I heard that CAC was already appreciative as well. So thank you. Thank you for your report. The next item is the Board Planning and Preparation Schedule. Associate Director Bogue, Report 16174 on page 86 of your board package. Welcome back, Associate Director Bogue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to trustees, this is the first annual report of this type outlining dates for this year. And we'll, would be happy to receive any feedback on this. Our intent would be to bring this back on an annual basis to nail down some dates. I believe Manager Gortmaker has also revised the board report schedule to include some of these dates for later this year.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele. Oh, sorry, Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amos, and Associate Director Bogue. This was, I think this was a joint suggestion, recommendation between trustees and staff about doing this, so that we could, and I'm not going to discuss about, I'll leave that to the trustees about the contents of it. But I think this was a really good idea, that we jointly came up together. So when we put our heads together, I think it works well.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
I really like this, and I appreciate the work that's gone into it. But given that it's public document, I would suggest maybe in the future, in the first item, it says MYP, you might want to not use the acronym and use the actual multi-year plan, just so that the public is aware. I'm not, I think it's great.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Yes. I also really, you know, me and my charts and timelines, I like that. The first one that Trustee Daniele referenced, it talks about in a MYP development year, but it doesn't say what to do in a non-development year. So I think we're in a non-development year, since we did it last year. So anyway, I just wondered for next year, putting the two pieces, so that you know when it's going to get earlier and later. Also, under March 31st, you might want to add in contract deadline, because deadline for declaration of potentially surplus staff sounds kind of onimous, um, whatever the word, yeah, the other word, bad. And so perhaps we could put some kind of thing per contractor, meeting contract deadlines. And then my final one is that the warrant, the purpose of the report said, the HDSP School Board Administrative Procedure requires, and do we have an administrative procedure called administrative procedure? So I wasn't too sure what it was that was requiring an annual timeline, and do we have such a document? You're saying this is the first one. I mean, I remember us talking about having the process.
Yes. Through you, Madam Chair, to Trustee Anne Harvey Hope. Sorry, Anne. We do have an administrative procedure, the name of the administrative procedure is not administrative procedure. But we do have an admin procedure called Critical Timelines, Program Planning, I believe. And in the procedure, it does reference an annual report to the board, so we can make that change.
So it would be the admin procedure with the name.
Called, yes.
Requires an annual timeline. Because, yes, you're right, we do have an admin procedure called Board Planning and Preparation Schedule. But when I read the warrant, I was like, what's telling you you have to do this? Anyway, that's.
Thank you for that, and for the other suggestions as well. Those are great suggestions for clarity for this report.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I just wanted to point out that the online version is missing this report, as is the version that was emailed out. So, that's all right. Well, not really, but thank you very much. I appreciate that. I had reviewed the administrative procedure, so I'm not surprised by anything that's in here. But, yeah, just missing two pages. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, it goes from page 85 to 88.
We are under a renewed math strategy, so.
And so those numbers are missing in the math strategy? It's like between grade 10 and 11, right?
I'm looking at Superintendent Solmini to sort this out.
Vice Chair Graves.
Thanks. I was just in the process of writing an email to say that this one isn't here. So for those of us who don't receive hard copies, if perhaps that particular report, just the two pages could be circulated to us, that would be excellent. Thank you.
Is there any other comments or questions? Thank you very much for this report. I think it will serve us in good stead in the future. It gives us some timelines that we know we can plan around, and I believe it's a great idea. So thank you very much. So our next item is the EDC report. Superintendent Veerman, Report 16174 on page 88 of your board package. Welcome back, Superintendent Veerman.
Thank you. As part of the Education Act, there's a requirement that an annual statement of education development charges be filed with the ministry. The report provides a summary of the rationale to, for boards to charge EDCs, and also provides a summary of the activity from the prior year. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Comments or questions regarding the EDCs? Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. My questions are more curiosity than anything else, I think. On Appendix A, when we talk about site acquisition expenditures, and it says multiple sites, I'm assuming those are Milton and, like, I wondered why we didn't outline what they were. But also, is, there's an issue with the EDCs as far as the timelines over the history. Sometimes we were allowed to charge, sometimes we weren't. There were, like, some of, a lot of our schools are sitting on sites that weren't EDC-funded land, but all the new ones are. So what I'm going to ask is probably not going to be a good idea. But I'm wondering whether or not there is actually a chart of revenue by municipality and expenditure, like, whether or not that comes into play, where we raised it, where we spent it, or whether it's a function of the history of how this has all unfolded, that it really doesn't make any difference.
Through the Chair, as part of the actual bylaw, there is quite a bit of information that is prepared in order to determine, or to continue to determine eligibility, and to provide the information that is required by both the ministry and the community to determine if we can go proceed with EDC charges. I would have to check, but I believe there is some historical information in that, in that document. But we don't prepare it in the format that you've described it as a course of business.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions on this report tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report, Superintendent Veerman. So, the trustee expenses, Report 16175 on page 91 of your board package.
Thank you. Through the Chair, as part of the trustee expense policy, there's a requirement that I present a report to the board that summarizes the expenditures during the year. So this is the second year that this report has been prepared. The first page provides excerpts from the actual policy. And on page 92, the expenditures are summarized either under board paid or amounts reimbursed, and they are in the categories that are identified in the actual policy. I've also provided a summary of the reserve balance. Again, according to the policy, any unspent amounts at the end of a term are rolled forward to the following term with specific motions relating to professional development. So I've, again, presented a summary of all the motions that have been approved, and the expenditures with respect to those motions. By the end of December, the information will be posted on the board website by trustee. Again, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on this report tonight? Seeing none, I guess it's very self-explanatory. So thank you very much for the report, Superintendent Veerman. So our next item is the capital update. Superintendent Cullen, Report 16160 on page 94 of your board package. Welcome, Superintendent Cullen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the time for these updates has sort of gone by. However, the key element that, from our perspective, was the update to the portable locations that have all been now put in place and occupied, which is the second round of portables, as you recall. They're all up in place. Have you taken questions related to any of the other capital items on this list?
Are there any comments or questions on the capital update report tonight? Trustee Collard.
I'm curious as to how many portables are currently at PL Robertson, and what the number of full-time equivalent students is at that school now.
I don't recall. I don't recall. I wonder if the superintendent of the school might know how many are there in total, and I don't know the enrollment right now.
Through the vice chair to trustee Collard. Hi. So PL Robertson is just under 1,000 students at this time. So I don't have the exact figure, but it's 970-something. And I do believe that they are close to 12 portables at this point.
Thank you. There's a question from trustee Pappan. Trustee Pappan? Trustee Pappan?
Thank you for that. We've actually had several conversations about those. We are looking at the removal of the ones that are at Serenus-McMillan. We have talked about what the long-term use may or may not be at Lester V. Pearson. As you know, they're not currently used by the students, but we did have an indication during the public process for the request for partnerships that there was a group that might be interested in making some use of those. So we were deferring the conversation on removal until we concluded that conversation.
Okay, thank you. In my second...
Thank you for that. That happens to be one of the projects that's on our renewal list, which we are hoping to bring back to trustees. I believe it'll be the December meeting. So our staff have been reviewing all the requests from the schools. It's definitely on that list. And I know it's been on the list through the last two, I'll say, rounds of elimination. It's still there. But at this point in time, I couldn't confirm that it will be there at the end of it. It's highly likely that it will if it's still at this stage. And we'll be bringing that entire list back for all trustees and all schools on not only renewal, but the school condition, the school condition, the funding, the close the gap, all of the combined projects, so that we can sort of summarize all of the activities we're anticipating carrying out this summer. It's going to be an extremely busy summer, so it's going to be a long list.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Graves.
Thank you. Through you, Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Thanks. I'm glad to see that Craig Kilbarger's extension or addition is back to a November starting date over the last one. And I was wondering if I might ask that if, for any reason, sort of between now and the time that we receive the capital projects update again, if that date changes, if perhaps I could be notified? Because I know this is one that, because of the ongoing capacity issues in Milton, I do get a fair number of questions from the public on it. So I'd like to be kept up to date, I guess, more frequently than the board reports, if there are going to be changes to that, so I can keep them informed.
Through the chair, trustee Graves. We will do that. And actually, we are anticipating an update on that very soon.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Superintendent Cullen. Wondering about the capital improvements or repairs or maintenance to this building. Perhaps there could, we could have a way for impending projects that are going to affect trustees. We possibly could get the memos that gets posted. Impending, you know, if you're going to take washrooms out of service, et cetera. Whether, the staff here may know about it, but we may not have knowledge. And perhaps there should be a way to just to send us a quick FYI. Look to see whether or not maybe we're missing in the internal my announcements or something. But I just noticed that we didn't really have a heads-up on that, and that may have affected how we used our space. So if there is something where, you know, you're going to shut down a door or whatever. So we've been warned not to use a particular door tonight because of a skunk. But other than that, I'm wondering whether or not we could have a heads-up on that.
Certainly, through the chair. I believe the way in which they have been communicated is probably through one of the folders or group email-type things. So we could certainly include the trustees in that loop.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I did have communication from the chair of the Mohawk Gardens Public School. And she was wondering when the renovations to the library would be completed.
I'd have to check the renewal list again. My recollection was part of the work, or areas in Mohawk were done last year, if I'm not mistaken. I believe there might be some parts of it still on this year, but I'd have to confirm that. So it'll all be part of the renewal list that we referred to earlier.
Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further speakers, thank you very much for your report, Superintendent Cullen. So our next item is the admin procedure update. Director Miller, report 16165 on page 96 of your board package. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amis. There are several updates, but almost all of them are just a date change or a minor wording change. But there are two new ones, two new APs. One on social media and electronics communications, and one on video surveillance. Trustees have them. And myself and the superintendents involved are prepared to answer any questions you may have about those this evening.
Trustee Grabens, you have to put yourself back on the list. Okay. Trustee Grabens.
Thank you. Through you, Chair Amis. I was looking at the video surveillance one and the student transportation, which I find interesting. But I was wondering if there's any conversation going on about videoing what's going on outside of the buses? Because there seems to be a bit of an epidemic of people not stopping for the flashing lights. And I know that's probably not our issue, but it's, it is our issue, but it's not our traffic laws. And I was wondering if there is a conversation going on with the city or with Halt and Police or anything about that?
Through your chair, Amis, to trustee Grabens. I'll start, and if Superintendent Padraic Barrick has anything. You're correct. It really isn't what video surveillance in our schools is about. It's about whether people are stopping for the flashing lights. But Karen LaQua is involved with the provincial body as our rep at HSTS, looking at that issue on how they can improve that or whatever. But I'm not sure we would have the capacity to do that. But I'm, and it's really, like you said, it's not really our main, the purpose of it. But superintendent Padraic Barrick, have anything to add beyond that?
I know it's been a discussion in some other regions. Just in putting this together with Karen, it did not come up that they're looking at that imminently. They did cite significant costs, and I think they're looking to see how it goes in some other jurisdictions.
The point is, we've got Karen there, so we at least have representation there. So we're kind of on the ground floor around it.
Thank you. Trustee Harvey Hope.
Thank you. I had a question about, again, numbers. The social media admin procedure, the third page. It's not got a number on it, but the fourth nugget. "Informed consent is necessary when placing personal information online. The 'in quote' statement of personal information practices provides notification." I'm not sure I know what that means. And because I don't know what that means, I would have thought I could have found it in the link that it listed in the additional resources. So if one is referring to something that we use on a regular basis, I would have thought maybe there was a reference or a source or something at the bottom.
Superintendent Trufan?
Absolutely. Thank you. Through the chair to trustee Harvey Hope. I believe that that's in our Freedom of Information form. That's the consent form that schools use.
So could we change the wording to say where that is? The statement of personal information practice, like, I wouldn't, I didn't know. I mean, I've filled out those forms for 17 years. I don't know, I didn't quite know what. I kind of had an idea that somewhere it says... Anyway, I'm just suggesting that perhaps if we can't figure it out, someone else can either.
We can take that back and look at the wording.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on the administrative procedure update? Seeing none? We are now up to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports tonight? Trustee Reynolds.
Thank you. On behalf of the Communications Committee, trustee Yael Harrison and myself would like to advise trustees that there will be no Inspire Awards report for December as there have been no Inspire Award nominations for the month of October. But no worries, there are nominations coming in on November. So trustees who are on the committee, please mark your calendars for November 30th to check those. So we'll be bringing forward a report in January. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Grabens.
Through you, Chair Amis. Trustee Pappan and I attended the HDSP Innovation and Technology Committee meeting last week. It was excellent. It had quite a, a number of different staff that were part of the meeting, looking for, you know, picking brains and all sorts of things, trying to look at possible innovation and technology solutions. So it was chaired by superintendents Trufan and Newton.
Thank you. Trustee Daniele.
Thank you. Just a reminder to trustees that tomorrow is the PIC Regional Rep Meeting here at JWS. And that's always a really good time. They separate us by schools, by our area, so it's always a good time to have as many trustees in them as possible if you can make it, please.
Thank you. Just vice chair Graves.
Thank you. A committee of the whole will meet on November 23rd and November 30th. At next week, we will have director's performance review, bylaws delegation piece, a trustee expense policy finalization, and a special education presentation. On November 30th, we're having a math presentation discussing bylaws again and looking at the financial statements. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much. I just have a quick, brief report from the Halt and Learning Foundation. I want to thank all trustees and members of the senior admin who were able to attend last Thursday night's Benefit Bash. It was a true success, and we are anxiously awaiting the results of that evening. It would be good to note for everyone who might be having super council meetings coming up that this school year alone, the HLF has provided $35,000 in financial support to students, an average of designating $714 per day. And they're very, very happy that there's, that they're able to meet and accommodate all of the requests that have been received. Trustees will have received a little bit of an email today from Leslie Mansfield talking about the Mountain Warehouse, and that this is the second year in a row where 400 coats for the winter have been donated by Mountain Warehouse. And trustee involvement and volunteer in helping to distribute these coats is welcome. And finally, as mentioned by our student trustees tonight, that the HLF will be making a presentation to the Student Senate on November 22. They're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports tonight? Seeing none, we're now up to our director's report. Director Miller.
Thank you, Chair Amis. I have several items this evening. Most are pretty small, but, not that they're small, I guess. But the first one is around life skills program. I'm going to refer to Superintendent Zonoffell.
Through the chair to trustees, with particular, another look at the needs in terms of the life skills suites. If you're familiar with this new design feature that we've put into our new schools, the life skills suite incorporates two classrooms in a shared space in terms of sort of a kitchen area and a sort of a general work area for those two classes. And looked at the needs for these suites in the Milton area and have considered how to incorporate this into the Milton 10 design. So that is a change that we'll be bringing forward when, if and when the ministry approves that school, that that school would include that life skill suite. So that wasn't included in the sketch plans that came forward to trustees earlier. So just wanted to make you aware of that as that moves forward.
Are there any comments or questions? Vice Chair Graves.
Through you, Chair. Thank you. That's excellent. And yes, Milton 10 has been approved. We received a notification a couple of weeks ago via an announcement from the provincial government. That's great. Thanks.
Thank you. As trustee Gray mentioned, the Halt and Learning Foundation was, I think, a tremendous success. And thank you to everyone here that attended. Unfortunately, I was unable to stay for very long in the evening because I went to another really cool event, the Creating a Scene. And I spoke at the Creating a Scene, but it was a... We'll have to talk to make sure that you can attend that next year because I know some of you would have loved to have gone to that. And it's a fantastic event. I saw a few productions from TA Blakelock's Pathways Program. And Hawthorne did an excellent one on, clearly on Syrian refugees arriving in Europe and so on. So tomorrow morning is the mayor's Hayek Breakfast. I know many of you are attending. I know all, three of the mayors are speaking. Mayor Krantz, Mayor Goldring, and Mayor Burton. I don't think Benet is, but... And last week, Wednesday, Thursday, I and a number of superintendents and trustee Daniele attended a provincial event. First day on the Wednesday, it's, the theme was around well-being. And we, Kathleen, the premier, was there, as was the Minister of Education, Mitzi Hunter. They had a panel discussion moderated by Dr. Jean Clinton with the premier of the province. And the following day, then, there were breakout sessions, one on GSNs, I attended that. One on the early years, superintendent Padraic Barrick attended that. And I think the third one was well-being, or is it renewed math strategy? Well-being. And superintendents Zonoffell, Etoff, and Salmini went to that. So we're just, it was kind of like the marching orders of the province that we were attending, right? And where we're going and so on. The last evening, we did our, an information session at Dr. Frank Hayden on the Par, Burlington Par. And I want to thank all the superintendents and the trustees who have been able to attend. I know that all of you haven't been able to attend. We've done all seven schools in Burlington now. And a part of our objective, in fact, our primary objective with these information sessions was to present to the public the challenge that we're facing as a board. We weren't there to find the solutions on those evenings. It was to provide the public with information. And essentially, my message several times was, "I believe if you can see the information that we can see, and you have the data that we can, you will agree that there's a challenge." We may ultimately disagree on what the solution is to that challenge. But at this point, it was, the objective was about, "Let's, let's look. Is there a problem here? Can we ignore it?" And I, from that perspective, I can't say that there's been unanimity, but I've, some of the feedback I've had has been positive in that people are suggesting solutions. In fact, as I was leaving Hayden last night, a member of the public took me aside and said, "Look, I've got some ideas. I see the issues," and so on. And that, that's happened at several of them. So, you know, some... So, you know, some were sparsely attended, but I think the word was out there, and some people went to all of them, and some people went to different ones for their schools. But I think by and large, I would say that our objective of demonstrating to the public our respect to them, and that we understand that this is a angst fill and difficult process for all involved, but we've got a solution, we've got a problem and a challenge, however we want to characterize it, and that we're actually looking for the community for help in solving this, and whatever that may be. So we finished the last one last night of those, and as I, as I described in them, this was an informal process. The formal process will be the park, and that will start to take effect on December 1st. We have one more kind of informal part, and that's next Monday, November 21st, from 7:00 to 8:30. General Manager Renzella and myself will be livestreamed, answering questions that are sent to us by email around the, the par. And then December 1st will be the first actual meeting of the park. It will be a closed meeting, because it's only for the members of the park. The reason for it being closed is content will not be discussed on that evening. It is not to explore options, it's not to explore solutions, it's not to explore any of that information. It is an orientation slash training session for the members of the committee to develop norms, set an agenda for the following meeting. Essentially, it's about the ground rules for the park to conduct itself. Hence, that's why it's not a public meeting. I think these, these good people that have stepped forward, and I applaud anybody that has stepped forward into the maelstrom of what is a difficult process, good for them. And I think they deserve the opportunity to sit and develop their rules, and hear from our facilitator and the Chair of our, of our committee, which will be Superintendent Padra Barak, who will be chairing the park. And that'll be, that'll be, I believe, December 1st. Is that correct? December 1st is that meeting? And we'll get some messaging out to the public around that as well. After that, everything else will be public, everything we will produce, including the information, the agendas and all those other things, will be posted on our website and will be made public. And I think so far, that's, that's how we've been carrying ourselves and doing it. So I think.
There's a question.
That's about it that I have for the Director's Report. Any questions around that?
Trustee Gervens.
I, oh, it was in my head, and then it's left. Oh, no, it wasn't about trustees attending. Oh, it'll come back to me later, sorry.
Trustee Collard.
Is it possible for the orientation materials to be put on the board's website, so that people can see what the orientation was?
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Collard, absolutely. We'll do it after the orientation, though, but yes, we'll, we'll post all that stuff.
Trustee Gervens.
Okay, so I remembered what it was. Do we have representation from all the schools now, like two members from every school to be on the park?
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Gervens, we didn't as of yesterday, but our planning department is working hard, trying to get that, we mostly have it. The final day for expression of interests, or of interest is Friday. But we will be reviewing where we were, but as of last evening, we did not have complete representation from all the schools.
Could I just add the, we're, we have school council reps, the other, we have every school, but we're just one. We need just one outstanding school to track down there.
For the school council reps?
Correct.
Not the general expression of interest?
Expression of interest.
And, and in part, the expression of interest, we won't really know completely until after Friday, because people are putting them in, and, and then determine, so.
Thank you. Trustee Collard.
Yes, I'm aware that an email went out to all parents in, with students in Burlington High Schools, and a subsequent email went out, I believe it was today. I posted the content of that email on my Facebook Word 5 page, and found out that many parents had not received the subsequent email. I asked for them to check their junk mail and their spam, and they still did not have the email, and I'm wondering if that could be sent out yet again, to ensure that every single parent of, who has a student in one of our Burlington Secondary Schools receives that second email.
Through you Chair Amos, to Trustee Collard, the second email was targeted to the schools where we had not had received an expression of interest. We had not sent it out to the entire community. Because there was, there was an email that went out to the entire community, and we've had expressions of interest from many of the schools. When we found that there were some schools where there was no expression of interest, we then sent a subsequent email to those, the, those attachment areas of the parents of those schools.
Did you have a follow-up, Trustee Collard? Go ahead.
I, I think it might be important to send it to all parents the second time around, because they may have students at more than one school, they may have students in a special education placement, and so I think it's important to ensure that, that when we reach out, we reach out to all.
I mean, it's, it's no skin off my nose to send it to them all, but we have reached out to them all, and we've had the expressions of interest brought in, and this was an attempt to get those areas where we, we didn't have those expression of interest. For some, we've had lots, for some of the schools, so, I, I mean, we can, Scott can go back and, and do it, it's no big, I, I don't think.
We can look at that. It won't hurt, but we wanted to provoke, create a little urgency in these schools that have had zero response, and we thought just a general out there could be easily looked over. We're trying to take on a little bit of, of apathy in, in some of the communities.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions around the Director's Report tonight? Seeing none, thank you very much for your report. We're now up to communications from the Chair. I don't really have anything, other than to mention it's Bullying Prevention Week for the Board, and next week is Bullying Prevention Week as per the Ministry of Education. So we have these two weeks to try and share the message. And also, I wanted to let you know, our December Board Meeting is on the 7th, and right now we have a Committee of the Whole scheduled for the 14th, and we are not planning to have a Board Meeting on the 21st. If we deem that we need to have a Board Meeting on the 14th, we will let you know if there's any urgency to any items that would come up, but at this time, it's not proposed. What we are proposing, what will happen is we are going to be having our next meeting in January, and it will be January the 11th, not the 4th. So the 4th will not have any meetings. The first Board Meeting in January will be the 11th, for planning purposes. It'll be the 11th and the 25th for Board Meetings in January, and the 18th would be Committee of the Whole. Director Miller.
Through you Chair Amos, to all trustees, the package for the January 11th meeting will go to the Board, to trustees, on December 19th. Because of the way the Christmas break works, it's the only way to do it, so, so you should receive the package December 19th. So senior admin around the table will make sure you have your reports in by then as well, so that they can be in that package for the January 11th Board Meeting.
So some seasonal reading. So is there any questions or comments on that? Okay, so just so you can do some planning. Okay, so we're now up to trustee questions and comments. Do we have any trustee questions and comments tonight? Trustee Oliver.
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. On November 11th, I had the privilege of attending Remembrance Day Ceremony and laying a wreath on behalf of all HDSP students, staff, and my fellow trustees. I know that day, our schools commemorate Remembrance Day with ceremonies, assemblies, moments of silence, and various tributes and projects, and I'm very proud and grateful for the wonderful work done by our teachers and our students, to make sure that we will not forget, and that we will always remember. I'd like to share with you a highlight from that day. I had the privilege of meeting one of our veterans, and he happens to be the father of Ms. Lewis, who is one of our, sorry, system principals. Mr. Jim Gibb is a veteran who served in the artillery at the opening and closing of World War II. He had gone through Italy, and was part of the freeing of the Netherlands. And so it was wonderful to meet him, and it just so happens that November 30th will be his 96th birthday. So I'd like to extend my gratitude to him, and wish him a very happy birthday, good health, and joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other trustee comments or questions tonight? Seeing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Gray, seconded by Trustee L. Harrison. And I'm assuming there's no discussion on that, so. I gotta find it. All those in favor?
In favor?
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone, and have a great night. And it's before 10.